Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, August 22nd, 2018, one year and one day after the big eclipse. That was kind of fun to do Throwback Thursday yesterday. We are in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon, and we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no presentations today, nobody signed up for public comment, and just two items on our consent agenda. Commissioner Brantano, that is yours.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda this morning. We have two items, under Community Service, approve an order distributing video lottery receipts for community development projects in the amount of $12,500 to the City of Jefferson for library equipment and health, approve Amendment Number 11 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health Authority to reduce $22,645 from the tuberculosis case management program and $20,000 to the Women Infant and Children NSA program for an agreement total of $5,449,530 through June 30th, 2019. One little comment before I leave this, I and we have been trying to help the Jefferson Library for a long time, and they've made good progress, and I'm happy to see us make a contribution.
Yeah, I'll second the motion and second your comment, too. It's great to see them do some good things down there, and we can help them out.
So we have a motion and a second, and I'll just add my comments on that, that it was when we went to State of the County and took a little tour with them to see different properties and actually toured the library, that we discussed the idea that these video lottery receipts might be a good source of funding for them to actually furnish the library. So they're very excited, I got an email from them a few weeks ago, and Ashley Marshall deserves a lot of credit because she walked them through the process, so I just want to say it's all good all the way around.
She actually got me a refund because I bought two bricks on accident.
Well, I won't make any comments about that.
It's technology me, Ashley, you know.
All right, so, motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 I always thought you were a brick short, how did I?
I knew that was going to come out.
Set myself up for that one, didn't I?
Yeah, so, those two items are approved. Now, under action, we have just two items today under Board of Commissioners and no public hearing, so it'll be a pretty short meeting. The first item is to consider approval of an order appointing Counselor Robert Carney, who's here today, Lieutenant Mike Ewy, who could not be here today, and then reappointing a whole list of people whose terms are up and need to be reappointed and are willing to serve, Kim Doster, Chief Jim Ferreras, Don Frederickson, Ed McKinney, Chief Jerry Moore, Mike Runyon, and John Van De Reel to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, all with terms ending July 31st, 2021. So, Lisa, do you want to start?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Lisa Miller, Business Services, Volunteer Services Coordinator. I am here this morning with one of the new members who recommended to join the Public Safety Coordinating Council. This is Counselor Robert Carney, and he's here to introduce himself and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, good morning. So would you introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about your background?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Robert Carney, my residence is 2017 Meridian Drive, Woodburn, Oregon, and I'm a retired electrical engineer. A little bit about my background, I graduated with a degree in electrical engineering from Marquette University in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. My degree was actually in biomedical engineering. I was one of the first 100 graduates in that field back in the 1960s, and unfortunately, while it was a field that I felt very accommodated to, it was not a field that was mature enough for me to earn a living. So I went to work for Westinghouse Electric Corporation and stayed with them for 20 years. I was what's called a service engineer. What I did was I traveled around the United States principally to industrial sites, and I would repair, install, or remove electrical equipment that was manufactured by Westinghouse or others. In 1985, I was recruited by Pacific Corps in Portland, and my family and I moved to Oregon at that time. We had traveled all around the United States as part of my service engineering career. It was sort of a military-type career, you had to go wherever it was that you were needed. In my career as a service engineer, frequently, I was one of one or two people that would go into an industrial plant to deal with a large electrical project, and what I would have to do is call upon the resources of the plant, personnel, and equipment. So, early in my career, I learned that I had to be able to discern who could do the work well and be able to manage the projects to completion, and it was a good skill to develop. When I joined Pacific Corps in 1985, I became responsible for the electric utility, the industrial component of their electric utility division. Essentially, what I did then was I negotiated electric rates with industrial plants around the territory, and that gave me a new component to my career, which was negotiation. It was something I had never quite been involved in that deeply before, but it became a very strong component of what I did after that. My career ended with Portland General Electric, I was a line engineer with them, and my responsibilities at that time were to work with the crews in the field. I had to get out and manage the projects that they were involved in, cutting lines, terminating service, moving the electric distribution around. And I spent five years in the twilight of my career doing that with PGE, retired in 2006, and moved to Woodburn at that point in time. Since then, I've been involved in a number of volunteer efforts, and I've been involved in my homeowners association, I'm currently the president of the homeowners association. And I decided to run for city council four years ago, and I'm currently now running again for a second four-year term. My principal motivation in joining the council was that I was very dissatisfied with the methodology that was being employed to try and secure industrial land on the west side of the city. I spent about three months rereading all of the materials that had been accumulated over 21 years, and I realized that the city of Woodburn was principally repeating the same process over and over again every five years to try and secure that industrial land. So I ran on the camp, my campaign promise was to help the city reconfigure their negotiating strategy, and I'm pleased to say that I was one of the influencers in that, and we were successful in being able to take our principal adversary and turn them from an adversary, actually, to a supporter, and we did eventually expand our urban growth boundary and secured approximately 110 acres of immediately developed land, developable land, and a significant amount above that of later developable land. And it was a very conscious decision on my part to try and do what I could to influence the council, and it turned out that everybody was willing to listen because we had a history of lack of success, and it was a process of education, we all worked together on it. And currently, I spend my time reading, I enjoy motorcycling, hiking, and I have a number of, I volunteer at five different organizations. Questions?
Just, Robert, Bob, I just want to appreciate you showing up to the council even before you were appointed and participating and being there, and that just demonstrates your interest in really, you know, now you're going to be formally appointed, but you've been there, and I just want people to recognize your service and all the things you just described, but also you've been attending the Public Safety Coordinating Council for a while.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron, I neglected to mention that, but I developed an early interest in that organization, and Commissioner Carlson was kind enough to permit me to sit in on those meetings, and I found them extremely illuminating. And besides being illuminating, by listening and understanding what was going on, I perceived how I could perhaps make a positive difference, and that's why I'm so pleased that you've seen fit to install me on that.
Yeah, the other observation I make, no question, but is that you are the perfect role model of what I share what retirement should be, is giving back to our community and continuing to serve in ways, maybe not getting paid for it because you've done other things to secure that, but.
Should I retire?
Yeah, like John's over there talking about his retirement right now while I'm speaking.
Not going to happen.
No, not going to happen, but, no, seriously, continuing to serve our community, we really appreciate that, and the talent and the experience that you have and continuing to give of that is much appreciated, so thank you.
I just want to add my thanks that you're finally going to be official, Bob's been attending meetings for a long, long time, like you were saying, and they are open to the public, so it's not like you were permitted to come, you couldn't come anyway, but we invited him to come sit at the table and to actually be part of the discussion and conversation with the council. So he's really shown a lot of commitment in this process, we're very excited to have you join. And I just wanted also to say, for those listening, the Public Safety Coordinating Council is just a great group of people, I think 31, 32, something like that, very diverse roles, health, mental health, police chiefs, judges, community leaders, business people, and the meetings are very great discussions in terms of helping us kind of dig deep and understand.
Victim advocates.
Yeah, some of these various public safety issues that are facing the community, so I've been happy and honored to be part of it.
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Before I make that motion, Madam Chair, you are, your leadership of that Public Safety Coordinating Council has taken it to a level that, I know you're retiring soon, but we're going to, we're going to miss you in that leadership position, and I'm going to do the best I can to keep it going.
You're going to do great, yeah.
All right, we'll consider, Madam Chair, I'll move approval of an order appointing Counselor Robert Carney, Lieutenant Mike Ewy, and reappointing Kim Doster, Chief Jim Ferreras, Don Frederickson, Ed McKinney, Chief Jerry Moore, Mike Runyon, John Van De Reel to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council with terms ending July 31st, 2021.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint two new council members and reappoint 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 existing council members. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, it's approved, thank you again.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
And we will see you at the next meeting. Our second item and last item today is to consider approval of an order appointing Shani Starr to the Public Defenders of Marion County, Inc. Board of Trustees with a term ending December 31st, 2021, and Shani is here along with Ashley Marshall. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ashley Marshall, I'm a policy analyst with the Marion County Board of Commissioners office.
I'm Shani Starr, Executive Director, CASA of Marion County.
So before you is an order for your consideration regarding the appointment of Shani Starr to the Public Defenders of Marion County Board of Trustees. The Public Defenders of Marion County is a nonprofit law firm that contracts with the state to take indigent defendants in criminal cases. It's governed by a seven-member Board of Trustees who hire and supervise the executive director as well as oversee a long range of policies. The board is comprised by a person selected by the Chief Justice of the Oregon Supreme Court, a person selected by the President of the Oregon State Bar, and a person selected by the Marion County Board of Commissioners, and those three people then nominate and elect the remaining four members. The Marion County Board of Commissioners' current appointee is Teresa Cox, and she has announced that she's retiring at the end of this month, so we are recommending Shani to fill that position. Shani is currently the Executive Director of CASA of Marion County and the former Executive Director of Marion Polk Medical Society. She's a member of the Marion County Children and Families Commission, and she's participated in the Marion County Re-Entry Initiative and Homeless Initiative Task Forces, as well as a number of other local work groups. She's a proven track record in advocating for individuals who are vulnerable in our community and successfully guiding the direction of nonprofits, and she has a bachelor's in business administration and a master's in organizational leadership. She would make an excellent addition to this Board of Trustees. And any other information you want to share, Shani?
Consider it an honor and a privilege to be appointed, thank you.
If you have any other questions, Shani or I would be happy to answer them.
So there's a story behind this, all right, so let me just jump in, and then Shani, you have to say more than that, I'm sorry. You did not get away with just that, all right, yeah. So, this is an appointment of the Board of Commissioners to this board, but the public defender really has a very important role in Marion County of providing services to people who can't afford legal counsel and who are involved in the criminal justice system. And from what I understand, this board is really involved in helping kind of shape the services that they provide, and they were really looking for someone to fill Teresa Cox's place. So Teresa Cox had been the Director of Community Action, and she's retiring as the Director of.
Grace House.
Grace House, thank you, because I called her there. And so she contacted us a number of months ago and said, "I'm retiring, and going to be done around August, and need a replacement," and so we kind of emailed back and forth about people that might be good, and she came up with Shani's name as someone because she said her role was really to say, "I work with people in the community that have needs, and I can say, 'Here's this service, here's that service,'" to people that are primarily in the legal field and are not as connected with the community resources. So that was really the role that Teresa was saying that it was. So when she mentioned Shani, I was like, "Yeah, perfect, perfect fit," in that she already talked to Shani, and Shani said, "Yeah, she'd think about it." So we're really excited that you're taking on this role, and not just CASA, because in CASA you work with, but you've had such a, how do I say, just an eclectic background of so many different things that you've done that have brought you closer to all of these connections that you have with community resources. So I think it's a great fit for you, and really a great contribution to them for you to be able to be on that board, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
With that, tell us a little bit about your background, Shani.
So currently, I serve as Executive Director of Marion County CASA, I've been there for about two and a half years, and in that time, I think we have, as a team, have done an amazing job of rebuilding that program and really increasing the number of children that we serve and the number of volunteers that we have to serve those children. One of the things that, over that two and a half years, that has really saddened me is that while our number-one priority is to work to reunite our families together, oftentimes I don't see the parents, when they're struggling with their own challenges within the criminal justice system, being referred to services that can help them on a path to be reunited with their, with their families and their children. And so that's when Teresa approached me about this, and actually, Robert's working on the case with me right now, we have, it just has saddened me that I think there's a lot of work that we can do yet to ensure that our parents who have their challenges and struggles have access to the services and understand and know how to access those services. And many times I think that comes through their public defenders, and so my hope and my goal in working on this board is to educate on what those services are and find ways, explore ways, that we can do a better job of making those services available to the parents in an effort to help them on their journey to have their families reunited.
Very good. Questions or comments?
That was sure a lot more and a lot nicer, boy, you hear the passion and commitment, Shani, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I get a little choked up there, listening to your stories and going to your graduations has been amazing the last couple of years, trying to get to those and see all those volunteers that are making a difference in children's lives, and I'm real excited about the one coming up. It's our first, your first CASA dog?
Yep.
Advocate, right?
Correct.
Can you share a little bit about that? That's really kind of cool.
Sir, so it all started a year ago at the Juvenile Court Improvement Program. Judge Pellegrini had invited me to be part of her team at the Model, Juvenile Model Court Summit, and at the time, we were talking about what can we do as a team to encourage our kiddos to participate in their court hearings? So there were, there were all sorts of ideas being thrown out, and I, it was somewhat tongue-in-cheek and sarcastic and trying to be funny, and I said, "Well, we just need to get a dog and bring a dog to court," and it was crickets after I said that around the table, and I thought, "Uh-oh, I've really sealed my fate now." And pretty soon, everybody said, "Actually, that's a great idea, how would we do that?" And so we started the conversation, and unbeknownst to me at the time, I would find myself in a situation where I had lost, I would be losing one of my dogs and adopting a new rescue boxer, and when we, after we got, we did the adoption and brought the foster home and just started spending time with her, I thought, "This, I think this dog has the temperament to maybe be trained to be that comfort dog." So I contacted one of our local nonprofits after doing some pretty extensive research, and I said, "I have a crazy idea. What do you think if we give this a try?" And so she came and did an evaluation of Lily Mae's temperament, and we've spent, since the end of January, we've been training Lily Mae to be a comfort dog for kiddos in court, and Lily Mae actually gets sworn in by Judge Pellegrini on September 6th at 1:30, and she even raises her paw.
That's what I was going to ask.
On command. Been working really hard on that. Judge Pellegrini's writing a special oath for Lily Mae, and she raises her paw on command during the oath, I've been improvising a little bit in our training.
I'm still working on that.
And, and so one of the interesting things about the, when you're training a service dog, you typically train them to lay down next to the chair, which is what we did for four and a half months with Lily Mae, and she was doing great. We did a drive run in the court, not in a court, but with children and people in the courtroom, just to kind of see where she was at in her training, and we realized, "Uh-oh, we can't have her lie down, we need to have her sit next to the kiddo so they can pet her." They couldn't pet her when she was laying down, so we had to undo four and a half months of training and retrain her to sit and lean into people, and she's doing amazing at that. She really, it's just, it's an amazing story when you look at, she was in an extremely bad environment and was dropped at a high-kill shelter. She has some special medical needs, like many of the kids that we serve. She was pulled out by a rescue organization from that shelter and put into a foster home for six months until she found her forever home. And so I think the parallels of her story and seeing the, seeing the potential of her is so, I think it's a visual, something short, that happened in a fairly short amount of time, but I think it's an example of how we, as a community, can look at our children who have come from some really horrible situations and the potential that our children have, if we can just see through their trauma and really spend the time working with them one-on-one, and if we put the time into helping them overcome their trauma, the amazing future that they can have in giving back, just like Lily Mae's going to do for them.
That's a great story, thanks, thanks for sharing, and.
You probably want to volunteer Cooper.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that she's, she's trained that dog better than John's trained me over the last four years, but you just take on really amazing challenges in our community, including Brussels sprouts, and we won't talk about that story.
Thank you.
But thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve an order appointing Shani Starr to the Public Defenders of Marion County Incorporated Board of Trustees with a term ending December 31st, 2021.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Shani to this Board of Trustees. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 You are appointed, thank you, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our action items, we have no public hearings, as I mentioned earlier. I will read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar of meetings where two or three commissioners will be there, one of them is already over, at 8:30 to 8:50 this morning was a meeting with Eric Peterson and Colonel Aaron Dorff, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, that was in the Silverton Conference Room, and we're just concluding our regular Wednesday board session here in the Senator hearing room. From 11:00 to 12:30 will be a meeting with Sponsors, Inc. in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. 8:30 to 9:00 on Monday, the 27th, is our weekly calendar review at Silverton Conference Room, followed by management update at 9:00 AM, followed by a work session at 10:00 AM on review of Policy 809, sale of tax-foreclosed and surplus real property. So all of those are in the Silverton Conference Room. And then still on Monday, August 27th, at 12:15 is a going-away lunch for Ashley Marshall, because she is leaving us, but.
Why is everybody leaving us?
We will have a great luncheon in her honor.
Something about me, I think.
And then 3 o'clock is a planning meeting for the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, also in the Silverton Conference Room. Then Tuesday, August 28th, at 8:30 is our Community Corrections Board meeting, that's a monthly meeting, Silverton Conference Room, followed at 10:30 by a regular board meeting of the Marion County Housing Authority, same place, followed at noon by the Steering Committee for the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, also in the Silverton Conference Room. And then finally, on August 29th, a week from today, at 9:00 AM, we'll be back here in the Senator hearing room for our regular Wednesday board session. So what's up, anything? Yeah, I was thinking, as we, as I posted, like, all I had to do was just share, you know, like the, what Jolene had sent with our glasses, eclipse, and then my family pictures, I put those on Facebook yesterday, so it took me maybe two seconds, and I was thinking of all the work that went into that, to prepare for that event, so with the, all of the visitors coming in and the worry about emergencies and.
Fire and garbage and crashes.
Right, yeah, so emergency management and all the police forces and sheriff's office and PIOs and Health Department and everything that went into making that event, just really a wonderful day. I mean, I'm just looking back at those pictures, every, I mean, it's a day that people remember, so it's very.
Except in that picture, I don't know where the sun is, I wish you wouldn't show that all day.
Yeah, well, you're like the Men in Black, you know, when I see that, I think, "Here come the Men in Black."
No, but that was when, I, you know, I've seen a few things still, I'm going to list that as the most amazing thing I've seen in my life, that was something special.
Yeah, it was really great. Yeah, we were just like, "Sam, you're supposed to look up, the sun is up. What's going on with you?"
The, the, the weather's very similar, or the, the sky, the smoke, a year ago, remember?
Sure.
I was in Detroit watching it last year, and it was.
Hazy.
Smoke was so bad, it was like fog on the lake, it was so bad, but it's not as, quite as bad as it was last year, because we don't have the whitewater fire here, but all the fires from around us are just, I mean, if you look at a satellite picture of the west coast, it's from Canada all the way down to California, it's just smoke. Seattle's worse than we are.
I'll just make it quick, just for you to watch out for, I've been working, and we've talked about it, with Oregon Garden, trying to get that wrapped up and secure their future, and I think there's finally some movements, I'm hoping within the next months or so, we can bring something forward and get that accomplished, I'm excited about it. I actually took my wife and daughter to dinner there last night, not trying to make a commercial, but it was very nice, and, except they had bees that attacked me as I came out of the car.
Yeah, there were a lot of bees.
This place in Albany?
No, the Oregon Garden.
You went there last night?
Yeah.
I thought you were going to.
They're closed on Tuesday.
You went all the way down there?
No, people are smarter than me, call ahead.
Okay, yeah. We had a good meeting this morning with Army Corps, that was. That was, it was, the Colonel was in and.
I think they're hearing us, if I may interrupt. It's got through a little bit.
They are, and they're looking at other alternative ways to construct the same.
Without all the impacts.
Right, so, and I was on the phone with Congressman Schrader yesterday afternoon. He met with the City of Salem yesterday. They're going back there today to meet with them, and we had a chance to, and I saw them take notes when I brought that up, you know, they're, they're working with the City of Salem on their issues, but we can't let State and.
Sure.
Mill City and Gates be left out of that.
Irrigation districts.
And then, our agriculture, so they took notes about that, and so, we'll, we'll see. And then, they're going down to meet with Lynn County. They're gonna meet with Roger and Will and whoever. I don't know, John, he didn't know if John was gonna be there or not, but, so, that was good. I'm glad that we had the opportunity to share that and then reemphasize the importance of some of the resiliency projects that we're working on up there behind the dam, so that was good.
Very good. Anything else you want to talk about?
I don't know if I want to talk about it. I'm off to Lincoln City to attend a conference and lunch that talks about carbon emissions. You know, I'm the last person who thinks there's other things more important, so maybe I'll be reeducated by the time I come back here Monday, maybe not.
Educated.
You're gonna ride your bike there?
Indoctrinated or educated?
Yeah, enlightened is, I think, the way they say.
Right, right.
Did I miss one?
Yep, no, actually, it's a, it's a letter of support.
Oh, okay.
For.
I think I didn't get that one.
Yeah.
What else happened this week? Seems like you've been busy.
I think that's about it. You might as well adjourn it rather than keep people waiting in suspense.
Well, if there's nothing more.
Shani was fun to listen to, by the way.
She was very fun to listen to.
Oh, she's still here. Not supposed to talk about people till they leave.
Say nice things about her while she's still here. All right, okay, well, if there's no other business, we will adjourn.